So you all please rise to the public legions. And I'd also lastly ask you to take a moment of silence in memory of September 11th. All right, thank you. Tonight's meeting is a hybrid format. It's in person and also on Zoom, and you can also attend by phone. For those of you unfamiliar with the procedures here before the zoning board appeals, there is an agenda. It's up here on a corner. You can take a copy if you like. Each application will be taken in its order on the agenda, assuming the person, the applicant's present. We'll take testimony from the applicant. The audience is welcome to participate and make any comments that they like, either here in person or on Zoom. When the record's closed, we'll move on to the next application. At the end of the agenda, we'll close the record, and then there's a deliberation process. No further testimony or evidence is accepted at that point, and we'll deliberate. Each applicant can either wait to the end of the meeting or until their case is decided, or they can call and contact the zoning administrator in the morning. Okay? So I'll take a roll call. Christine?
Here.
Art?
Here.
Phyllis?
Here.
Tony G.
Here.
Tony S.
Here.
And Larry's absent, so we do have a quorum. So let's begin. I'll go to item number one. That's Arthur S. Ma redevelopment holdings. If you guys want to come up? Thank you. Okay, you're still under oath, but if you don't mind.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, so what if anything has changed since the last meeting?
Sure. So first off, I want to introduce myself and say thank you for letting us be here tonight. My name's Jacob Reckus, and I'm from the applicant, and I know Nancy's been representing us, and I want to thank her. I think tonight we wanted to share a little bit of background, which might not, we might not have done our best job of presenting some of the detail, and wanted to make sure that it was on the record and part of the conversation, and led to why we are proposing what we've proposed up until now, and see where that takes us. So we recognize and understand that there's been some concern about putting a tenant sign on Raymond Avenue in the Arlington Town Center. What I wanted to share as background is that this specific site in the Arlington Town Center is in an additional zone called the Anchor Project Zone, which was done through an approval of the town board. And so what was unique about that site is it was intentionally different, and it was intended to do a couple of things. I'd like to read one of them. The Anchor Project Zone's objectives were to promote business activity both on and off the site, and to act as a catalyst for increased activity, for increased investment on adjoining nearby properties. So it was distinctly unique within the ATC. We made a mistake, and I want to acknowledge that, in that we didn't deal with or address the signage at the time that we dealt with the rest of the zoning. And so then that led us to come in front of you guys. I think we want to recognize, first off, we are aware of your task, and we respect and appreciate your task, and I think the documentation that you guys put out stood loud and stood tall for us. So the piece that stood out most to me was the standard of review that I think we understood you're doing is to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. And so that's actually what made us want to come back one more time and have one more conversation. So this project is a little different and unique in the town center in that we're one of the few projects that has a parking lot behind the building. We're one of the few projects that has multiple tenants with a parking lot behind the building. And we also have a relatively unique layout. If you can imagine Raymond Avenue coming south from Vassar College, there used to be two parking lot entrances at the site. There used to be a semicircle, if you guys recall. Part of our project was to actually eliminate the northern entrance, which was very close to the arterial, and that was dubbed as a safety concern, which we fully agree with. So now, as you enter from Raymond, there's a left turn signal and a left turn lane on Raymond going north. If you miss that, and for those of you guys who know that street, you'll know, if you miss that turn and you want to get back into the site, you are now going to have to go past the property, cross the arterial, go to Main, turn right, turn right, pass the arterial, turn right, cross Raymond, get inside. And so our fear is that some people are law-abiding citizens and are going to do that, and some people, if they miss that entrance, might do some other things. And I think that, for us, is actually a health and safety fear that's really bad for us if there's a traffic accident right outside our site. So one of the reasons that we proposed this tenant detailed sign is, quite honestly, this is a cost that we didn't foresee in our original package. It's more expensive than we wanted. We're not doing it for that reason. We're actually doing it for the health and safety. When I read the documents, we said, well, hold on. I want to make sure that we're clearly communicating what's happening and what's not happening. So we have some tenants that are going to go behind Raymond Avenue. We have some tenants that are going to go on Raymond Avenue that you won't actually know until you pass in front of them if you're driving along and you don't know that that's where you're going. And I think we wanted to raise that and ask if that content changes the board's interpretation or openness to some tenant signage on Raymond.
Art?
I thought we were kind of okay with the signage for the tenants at the entrance of the driveway. No? You didn't want that one?
No, that's the issue, is the tenant one.
I thought the one in contention was the one on the arterial end.
The one, the more narrow one that goes at the corner of the arterial and Raymond, is probably, I think, no one has much of a concern about that, if we can figure out what size it actually is. It's the concerns that the county has and the staff have are the tenant signs on the big monument sign on Raymond Avenue. That's correct, right?
That is correct, and the county actually did formally recommend that the tenant panels should be removed and the sign reduced in size for that sign.
So I recognize that concern about the traffic issue. But what would be very helpful for me is because I still have some, I think there's still some confusion about the sign that we don't seem to have a problem with, the size of the sign that we don't seem to have a problem with. So I'd like to get that resolved.
And we appreciate that, and I think we, I believe Nancy can talk about how we reduce that size and agree.
I believe I had given you, the last meeting you requested that I submit a week before tonight's meeting, a breakdown of the sizes of the actual signage, the, not the base, the actual signage, and the two columns, decorative columns, because you wanted to count that as square footage. So I did submit that to you, Chrissy?
Yeah, they have it.
Oh, they have it, okay. So that's detailed, the square footage on there?
Okay.
Each one broken down, so you can see what's actually signage and what's actually the column, and then the stone column.
All right, so is this correct here, the one that would go on the arterial at the corner of Raymond and the arterial on Lot 1?
Yes.
Is 10 feet 1 inch high, including the base? And it doesn't give, the other dimension, what says 29 square feet?
Yeah, on the right at the bottom, it should have a breakdown.
I don't think I...
I think, Chrissy, am I correct that the, there's a denial letter in the packet that is...
A corrected denial, yeah.
Corrected denial letter. It's still dated May 18th, but it's actually the more recent numbers for the September meeting, and I think the dimensions are highlighted on it. Is that, that's the right one, right? Yeah, I see it in Tony G.'s hands.
Yep.
Actually, I think for sign one, what's in the legal notice is the correct, are the correct dimensions, because I think there was meant to be a denial letter after this one. One of the issues we had with the measuring was, I don't, when I added up all of the bits of the signs, they didn't add up to what the, what's in Chrissy's denial letter. They added up larger, and one of the reasons is, and it may be due to the fact that there's some overlap on some of the faces of the sign that go into another sign, but when you add up the single components, it adds up to what's in the agenda rather than what's in Chrissy's denial letter.
So the agenda has the right numbers on it?
That's my understanding.
So for instance, on the May 18th, the most recent May 18th denial letter, it says that the monument located on Lot 1, the one we're talking about, 3 feet at the wires and 10 feet at the tallest, but in the agenda, it says 10 feet 1 inch, including the base, and just says 29 square feet. So that's a little, it's a little less than 3 feet wide. So what exactly are the dimensions of the sign that goes on Lot 1? Lisa, do you have those? Or did you take it off?
Yeah, give me, give me one second, and I'll go and pull mine. Hold on. Okay. So sign one, one part of...
Sign two is actually what we're talking about right now. Sign two on Lot 1.
Sign two I had as the part that says the Arlington being 20 inches wide by 8 feet 8 inches tall, which works out to 14.44 square feet. The beige portion of the sign being 7 inches by 9 feet 1 inch, because one of, oh, I'm sorry, I still don't have my video on. Hold on. One of the issues is that in the calculations provided by the applicant, they actually included the base calculations in this sign, but didn't include the base in the other one. The base does not need to be included for these purposes. And then the stone portion, so the beige portion of the sign is 5.3 square feet, and the stone portion of the sign is 1 foot by 9 foot 1 inch, which works out to 9.1 feet, which totals to 28.84 square feet. So to my thinking, that sign is 29 square feet in round numbers.
Okay.
Did I go through that too quickly?
No. The applicant's comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, because I don't want to be in a position where we give you, we grant you a variance, assuming we grant you a variance, and then you build something where your interpretation is different than our interpretation?
No.
And creates an issue?
Yeah, appreciate that.
Okay, so if we're all comfortable with that?
That is correct, with the columns included with the sign, the black part of the sign. That is correct.
Okay. And so my impression, my impression about the sign one, the one with the, all the stores on it, is I, rather than make a decision today, which might not be favorable to you based upon the county's recommendation and the fact actually that we're missing someone who might have a different vote, if you want a little more time to work with the staff to come up with something that might be more acceptable, that might be to your advantage. Do you have a time constraint for what you're doing?
Unfortunately, we do have a time constraint, which is a challenge.
So how do you feel about if we were to vote on sign two? While you resolve any of the issues on sign one, is that beneficial to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would actually be helpful.
Is that acceptable to the board?
That's sign two?
That's sign two on Lot 1, yes.
Sign two is on 4455.
Correct, right on the corner.
Okay, and that's 29 square feet, that's what we're saying.
Okay. Right. Is that, that good with everybody? Okay. All right.
In order to vote for the variance for sign one, you would need five votes, basically, to grant the variance, and you have six board members here.
Right.
Out of seven.
Right. For this, I think that would be helpful, because that allows process to move forward. We do appreciate, we are, there are tenants thankfully living in the site, we're very excited about, and the commercial tenants are now hopefully coming very, very...
When do you expect to, okay?
The residential units are open. The commercial tenants, yeah, let's say November, October, November, December, January. So they are, we have signed leases for some of them, and the others were signing leases. And obviously, this is a topic that they're all very interested to know how it plays out. We also have a deadline for our lender that wants us to be done with all improvements before the end of the year.
Okay. Also, at least on the one on Raymond Avenue, I'm going to ask that there's, that you indicate your street number on the sign. And it might not be appropriate on the one that's going on on the arterial, but you can decide that.
Can you clarify that?
So the address is 25 Raymond Avenue?
Well, the address for, so that's why I'm interested in clarification. So the address for the building on Raymond is 21 Raymond.
Okay.
The address for the building behind Raymond is 17 Anya, and the address for the building in the back of the site to be built is 14 Sarah Drive. So that's part of the...
So how are you gonna, what, when you advertise, how, what address are you going to use?
Great question. We are currently using 21 Raymond as the first building, and people are familiar with Raymond. Not everybody knows the names that we just named on the inside. One of the reasons that the tenant signage matters to us is because not everybody will be at that address, so we were thinking if we put their signage up front, then they'll...
So here, I think people just plug an address into Google or MapQuest, and so that's kind of the address that I think would be appropriate?
Yeah. Google right now picks up both 17 Anya and 21 Raymond. I think that because, I think that the fire department was very particular about having us number the building visible from Raymond Avenue, so I think that's already in place.
Okay.
That's what we're going to do on the ends of the building. When you go in the entrance to the parking lot, we will have Anya Court in the other one there. So that way, on the front sign, on the south sign, we would put 21, I'm assuming, 21 Raymond.
Well, that's actually what I was interested in clarifying. I'm not sure that that's going to help the fire. I think that might confuse more, at least the fire department.
The buildings are numbered, and the fire department's already worked that out with you. It may be better sent to leave the number off of that and just have the Arlington.
Because the fire department's very particular about how they wanted us to show so they don't end up at the wrong building. Yeah.
Okay.
With respect to the sign on Raymond?
Yes.
Would there be an opportunity for us to have a conversation? I think we can wait until the next meeting to get the final approval, but I think if we pushed out beyond that, we would be in trouble ourselves. Is there an opportunity to have discourse on it before the next meeting? How does that work?
I think you can work it out with staff. You wouldn't be working it out with us.
Okay.
But I think that if you, you can speak with staff, and they may give you some suggestions.
Okay.
And if you come back, you know, to give us something to work with, we can...
We've discussed two or three different options.
Okay.
That we can discuss with staff, if you'd like, whichever ones you choose, or one you choose, and then I get those designs and everything to Chrissy a week prior to the next meeting, and then all of the board has the opportunity to review it, and then the next meeting, we should be able to have some form of a decision.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good plan. Appreciate that.
That makes the most sense to me.
All right.
I don't know if there's any members of the board tonight who want to provide Jacob and Nancy with any comments. Sorry. But it may be helpful to, because the staff truly doesn't have the authority to do anything. They can make recommendations, and this board has the ultimate authority. So if there is something about the sign that is really a nonstarter, or something that you would really like to see, now would be the time to make those points to the applicant so that, A, they're on the record, and B, the applicant knows what directions to go in for what the board's looking for.
I think for me, I'm pretty in favor of what the county and staff have recommended, so...
Which is no tenant sign information at all.
Correct. But if they come up with something that's, they come up with something that's not as imposing, that might be something we can consider.
So I want to thank the suggestion for getting, the feedback is helpful for us, because I think what we read from the county sign is that there was a distinction between the tenants that are interior to the site and just don't have any signage on Raymond, and then the tenants who do have signage on Raymond. So one of the thoughts that we had talked about is, and also dropping the sign, I think the original sign listed was 18 feet by 11.
We had dropped it then to 13 foot.
And we dropped it to 13 by 9, and so if we theoretically dropped, it's got three lines, so one of the thoughts was to drop another line, only have the tenants that are in the building behind that don't otherwise have visibility on Raymond, and then to have kind of one panel that would indicate an arrow and say parking for homes and shops of Raymond Avenue or of the Arlington, whatever, whatever that might be.
So that would still require a variance, but less of a variance, and I think Jacob makes a good point, leasing those people in the second one with absolutely no advertising is not going to be an easy task, because they're not necessarily going to be businesses like a doctor where you know you're making an appointment and you're going there, so you look up the address.
Well, and it's to balancing the various interests of various town boards and various town organizations. So, you know, on the one hand, the town is promoting catalyzing investment, and investment only happens if the first round works. And if the first round doesn't work, then the second round doesn't come in. So to promote this on the one hand, but then handicap and make it harder on the other hand is, is hard. And, you know, we've tried, and I hope everybody will vouch that we've tried to do this in a collaborative way to make this really a community-based project, and so I think anything that the board would offer to allow us to actually help those businesses succeed would be good for us.
Okay.
I did want to point out in my staff report that I did give you the guys the example of Eastdale Village, you know, the fact that they do have many businesses that are located off of Duchess Turnpike and don't have signage on Duchess Turnpike, and that does seem to work. I think there's a certain amount of the anchor project that is meant to create gravity, weight, right? People will know it's there, because it is a big and exciting place. So I, you know, I think that's something that board needs to think about as well. Is that all, you know, is that enough or not? Because I...
May I comment on that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's no doubt Eastdale has made a big splash, but the signs along East, all the stores are beautiful, but you're coming off Route 44, and you're going in there, and you're on like a little town street. So you have the opportunity, you know, to do this and look, and it's, they're doing a great job. I think it's fantastic. I love Eastdale. But I really don't think this is the same, because they're only facing Raymond. There's no parking in front of the building on that side of the street.
On that side of the street.
Yeah. And as I have mentioned before, it's a very dangerous section coming through, because you've got two lanes coming through with only like 50 feet to merge. So you don't want them looking. That's great for walking traffic, so as they're going down and they go through, they'll spot that one on the arterial and say, oh, the Arlington, you know, what's in there? And then you had some kind of direction there. As they're coming down, they would see that small monument sign, or monument sign, and no, put on your blinker, and you can turn in there, you know, and then they come out. So it's not quite the same to me, because I'm coming off 44, and I'm on a little street that's only the people going to that street. And it's beautiful, I agree with you, but it's just a little bit different.
I think it's a question of once you know it's there, you know it's there.
Yeah.
Or that there's things there.
You know, we're also fans of Eastdale and believe that rising tides lift all ships, so we're happy that they're successful. Their zoning, their signage zoning is different in a really material way right here, because if you guys, you probably know better than we do, but their signage allows signage over the building and vertical signage like this. So if you're driving on 44 and you're looking in, you're seeing their sign. If you're on Raymond Avenue, we simply don't have that. And if you guys, you know, that's another angle, maybe, maybe we add some zoning and we get the same zoning that they have, that would be a different thing to consider as well. But they're just different in, in those, you know, real ways.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I want to see one in, in the audience. Anyone on Zoom? So Lisa, should I close the record on sign two and adjourn, move to adjourn sign one? That's the procedure?
Yes.
Okay. Did I, I move to close the public hearing on item one for sign two?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I move to adjourn item one to the October 16th meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Then that motion carries. Okay?
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it very much. All right. That brings us to item two. That's slash car wash. I move to adjourn that to the October 16th at the request of the applicant. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us item number three, Vassar College, 157, 165 College Avenue. The addresses are slightly different on your, between the denial letter and the, and whatever you call this thing? Addendum? Agenda? Okay, so I'll move to...
So the applicant's address is the 124, but the property address is what's shown on the, is what's shown on the agenda. So that's what the variance is for.
Okay. All right, then I'll move to adjourn that to the October 16th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number four, Robert Rubin, 1 drum court. Want to come up?
During Mrs. Rubin, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you just, why don't you describe what you want?
We have an existing...
Yeah, if you could get a little closer to the microphone, so if you...
Sure, I'm sorry.
That's all.
We have an existing deck on our house that apparently does not have the footage that is required, and we're requesting that we have variance to, for the 20... Help me out here, please. The deck, and I have a picture on my phone. I apologize, folks, that it did not come out, that I could print it and distribute. But the deck, if you look from this, from the street, the deck and the house are, you know, the same. It just, there's no variance.
Okay, so it doesn't encroach any further on the sideline than the main house?
No.
Okay, and when was the deck put in?
Probably about 42 or 3 years ago.
42, you said?
About 42 years ago, between 40, between 40 and 42 years ago. We moved in 46 years ago with the existing people on the house.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony G.
No questions.
Tony, Tony S., can you?
No question.
Okay. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, anyone in Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see anything, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And again, you can wait till the end of the year. And again, you can wait to the end of the evening, or you can watch this on home, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning. Okay. That brings us to item number five, Eric Hoffman, one Homer Place. Is there someone here for that application? Come on up. Why don't you state your name?
Eric Hoffman.
Mr. Hoffman, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe your application for us?
We want to put a fence, six-foot privacy fence.
I'm sorry, say that again?
A six-foot privacy fence along the side yard. I'm on a corner lot.
Okay.
The, the fence wouldn't start until the back of the house, so it's about sixty-six or more feet from the corner to the back.
All right, and you, in your application, you put a diagram, and if I, if I can read it correctly, it starts, it comes off a shed on the, in the back corner of the house, or it comes off the back corner of the house?
Yeah, the garage, that's the garage corner.
Is that a garage? Okay.
Yeah.
And then it goes back to your, what would be normally your backyard?
Yeah, the backyard. The neighbor has a-
Another fence there?
Yeah, the, the same thing I'm trying to do. They were, they're grandfathered in.
Okay, and what type of fencing would it be?
PVC, tongue and groove, white, privacy, you know, the basic PVC they have out there now.
Okay, and only six feet?
Yeah.
Christine, you have any questions?
Yeah, there's a big pine tree there. Is it going to go behind the pine tree or in front of it?
Behind, on our, on our side, yeah, like.
So you'll see the pine tree from the road or my-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
And Chrissy, are there any implications about where the right of way is for the, for the roadway and where the fence is going? Do you know where your property line ends?
I wasn't able to get a survey or out before today.
Okay.
But, you know.
Is it ten feet from the, the road?
The, the property line itself.
The fence.
Where you want to put the fence?
Yeah, it would be, well, it would be aligned with the, the neighbor, the backyard neighbor's fence.
So here's the deal, in addition to the variance for the height of the, of the fence, there are all some, some legal impediments about where it can go on your property?
Okay.
Which we don't have anything to do with, really. But once you get your survey, you still intend to get a survey?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, then when, then he comes in for a fence permit?
Did I deny your original permit?
Yes.
Okay, so the original permit was denied.
Okay, so when you come in, when he comes in for the permit, you'll be able to make sure that where it's going is-
So you're conditioning him to get a survey?
Not, but you're going to get a survey, right?
I'm going to get a survey because I definitely don't want, you know, an issue with the placement of the fence. I definitely have to make sure that it's not only on my property, but, you know, a little, a little further in, you know, not right on the line, but.
Right, I just don't want to encroach you on the right of way, the town's right of way on the street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I also didn't want, you know, snowplows and stuff like that to push up and build up onto the, you know. And again, like was mentioned, the, the pine tree that, that is over there, if I were to put it on the street side, there, there wouldn't be enough room. So it would have to be on that, that inside portion away from the road.
Okay. Christine, do you have any other questions?
That was it.
Art?
Does it have to be white? It's probably the biggest complaint we have with the plastic fences, they're all white.
They are, they're all white. I, I wish I can, you know, I can get away with a brown. You know, my, my house is white. We had a patio put in, and we had to go with the gray and not the earth tone patio. So we're locked into, to that. But I mean, you know, it, it could be, you know, gray, it could be, but.
Just a thought, and that's, you know, there's so many white ones.
I know.
As we tour the areas, it's,
I know.
You know, they're making it look so stocky, not stocky, but it looks like an encampment behind the white fence. And it's going to be behind your split rail fence, correct?
Yes.
Same line?
No, not the same line. It would be in further than the, the split rail. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you taking down the split rail?
Yes.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see one, anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see any, anything, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Okay, and then again, you can stay till the end or call in the morning.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item number six, eleven Lyford Street. Is there someone here for that application?
Hello, everyone.
All right, why don't you state your name?
John Todd Broomhead.
Mr. Broomhead, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
So my goal is to replace an existing deck that's on the rear of my house with, with a new deck. And the problem is that the current, you know, zoning requires a twenty-foot side yard setback, but the current deck is close, it's closer to the side than that. So that my, the new deck wouldn't be any wider than the one that's currently there. It would be a little bit longer, but that actually doesn't matter because the back, it's like, you know, much far, farther than twenty feet from that. But it's basically, from the side perspective, it's replacing it in kind. I hope that made sense.
All right, so just so I'm clear, you said it's no wider, but is it, is it going to, as I recall, your deck now sits somewhat, just a little bit in from the side of your house?
Yes.
Is it going to encroach any further onto the side lot line than your house?
No.
Is it going to, and so it won't encroach any further than it is right now?
Right, it's still going to be narrower than the, right, a tiny bit narrower than the house. I don't know what the exact dimension is currently, but, yeah.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No question.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see anyone in the audience, anyone in Zoom who wishes to comment on this? All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to item number seven, fifty-five King George Road.
Hello. Good evening.
All right, just state your name?
John Pfeiffer.
And is that your wife on Zoom?
Oh, yes, she is.
Is she going to be speaking, or is she just watching you?
Uh, she's just going to be watching unless she wants to butt in, which I wouldn't-
Just to get, Mr. and Mrs. Pfeiffer, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Uh, we're applying for an ADU accessory dwelling unit that'll be in the lower floor of the, of the house.
Okay. And so you own your home?
Yes.
And you reside there?
Correct.
You have municipal water and sewer?
Correct.
Okay, why don't you describe the parking?
Uh, we've got a double wide driveway that goes from the street to the, to the garage. You could fit a good four or five cars on one side. You could probably fit ten cars in that driveway all packed in.
And there's just, will be a separate entrance for the accessory apartment?
Correct. We've got, the lower floor has, already has an entrance, and that's why we are using that side of the lower floor because it has an entrance, and so we'll, yeah, they'll go in that.
There's a walkway from the driveway to the-
There will be.
Yeah.
Okay, and you've indicated the size of your house and the size of your apartment?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Christine, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No, we went in and it was much better going in than looking at the diagram, but no questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, anyone from Zoom who wishes to comment? All right, seeing none, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number eight, four nineteen Vassar Road. All right, why don't you state your name?
David Smith.
What was your name? I'm sorry?
David Smith.
Mr. Smith, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I swear.
Just a second. Oh, David Smith, okay. All right, why don't you describe the application?
So the property is currently an estate of my wife's late grandparents, and we're trying to buy it from the estate. The issue we have is the shed is on the property line, and I looked at county records, and the county says the shed's been there since nineteen fifty-six. So we're trying to just make it legal.
All right, do you know the size of this shed?
It's a hundred and twenty-one square feet.
What's the condition of the shed?
It's in fair condition. It's not falling apart.
All right, Christine, you have any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No, we've heard nothing from the neighbors, right?
None on this one.
Uh, this one?
Phyllis?
No, I have no questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
Yeah, no question.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see one in the audience. Anyone from Zoom?
Can I, Paul, can I ask? I'm sorry.
No, you passed it, you lost your application.
My bad. On the off, it's a wooden, wooden shed or is it a metal shed?
It's a wooden shed.
On the off chance that that shed comes down, can we ask that if they replace it with another shed, that it be moved in from the property line?
My recollection of your backyard, it's not very big, is it?
No, the grass next to the driveway, that's all part of the septic system.
Yeah.
Scratch that.
Okay. All right.
And went on Zoom where he said that was the last square we left off. Doesn't look like it.
Okay, then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number nine, nineteen Cardinal Drive.
Hi, this is Jennifer Rubino on Zoom.
Okay.
Ms. Rubino, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge? Yes.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Okay, I too am looking for a variance for an existing deck. It's less than twenty feet from the side property line. It's been in place for either twenty-three or twenty-four years, we're not sure exactly. So I'm looking for a variance of eight feet.
Okay, and I note there's a, a letter from a neighbor who has no objection to the application?
Yeah. That's the neighbor who's decided the deck is on.
And as I recall, this is actually farther from the side lot line than, than the house? Is that correct?
It actually extends, I think, about a, no, yeah, sorry, it's inset from the house. You're right, the house is a little bit closer to the property line than the deck is.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
Sorry, no, no question.
You sure?
He's called me once, that's it.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony?
No, sir.
Tony?
No question.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see anyone, anyone from Zoom who wishes to comment? All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And again, you can either wait to the end of the evening, or you can contact the zoning administrator in the morning.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number ten, forty-six Kelsey Road.
My name is Richard Carter.
Mr. Carter, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Okay, so we have an existing paved driveway that the house came with when we bought it about eighteen years ago. You really only fit one car there. There's some additional paving in between our house and the next house over, which is only like eight or nine feet wide. You could fit a motorcycle there comfortably, but a second car won't go there very safely. So I've had to park, for many years it was fine, but we've got a daughter who drives now, and my wife works a very different schedule than I do. We've got two cars in the family, so I'm parking on the other side of the house, which for some time I was just parking the grass because I intended to gravel it, and procrastination, procrastination. So it's been gravled now, but it requires a variance because it is a second driveway. It's basically just pretty much the same dimensions as the paved driveway, just gravel laid on the ground instead of being paved.
And in the back of your property, there's a two-car garage, right?
Yes, but you have to go squeeze between the two narrow houses to get to that garage. You definitely can't get to it from the left side of the house. It's, you have to go through trees to do that.
What do you think the distance is between the two houses?
I would say not much more than nine feet, and there's also a Verizon Junction box right just inside the corner of the, the neighbor's house, not on our house, on the other house that you have to worry about avoiding when you pull in there.
On which side?
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm sorry, which side is the junction box?
It's, well, it's-
If you're looking at it, if you're looking at your house from the street-
If I'm looking at the house, the junction box is on the left side of the house to the right of our house. It's, it's on the neighbor's house.
Okay. All right, and on the left of your house, how much space do you have between your property and the house, the edge of the property and your house?
Between the edge of property and my house, uh, hopefully not more than five or six feet, maybe seven.
Well, you're, you're parking a car there now, right?
Well, we're not parking beside the house, we're parking beside the front porch. We don't actually go up behind, beside the, the side of the house itself. There's trees there, some of which we may eventually need to take down. They're getting rather large and there's power line concerns. But right now, you can't really go beside the house. It's just right up beside the front porch.
Okay, and I'm sorry, you said you lived there for sixteen years?
Eighteen, actually.
Eighteen years?
Two thousand and five is when we moved in.
Have you ever used the two-car garage?
Not for parking, no. I mean, we use it for storage and other things, but we've never actually driven a car into the back of the yard.
When you, when you bought the property, did you know was the, was the garage being used to store cars?
Not at the time. Well, as far as we know, it did not appear to be. I mean, I don't know if they had them in the past, but when we moved in at the time, it would appear to be mostly being used for personal storage, extra space. There weren't any vehicles actually sitting in there other than a snow blower, not any cars.
And what type of cars do you have?
The, the, there is a Toyota, Toyota RAV4 and a Toyota Sienna.
Okay, I think that's all I have. Christine?
So I'm looking at your diagram on the original driveway, and I'm trying to remember it. Is there any way that you can make the driveway a little bit wider on your, on your original driveway so that you can?
Not without moving the houses. It's-
It's that close on the other side? And do you have a curb cut on the, on the area that you're using?
It, the curb is like, it's like a half an inch thing. The curb is almost not there, so I didn't really feel I had to do anything with it, but I could arrange to do that if there's a, a concern over that. But the curb is, if you're talking about in front of where the, the gravel drive- But the curb is, if you're talking about in front of where the, the gravel driveway is, the curb is almost non-existent already.
I, I actually spoke to Highway and if this is approved, then they would require a curb cut permit for that property.
Okay. And I would talk to you about that, I assume?
Uh, we would actually call the Highway, but.
Call the Highway Department?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Art?
Okay, um, to back up a little bit, the previous owner did always use the driveway and the garage. Cause I've lived there over 50 years, so they never had any problem getting in there. Um, the other, the other question is that there's room nose to nose or nose to tail to pull two cars into that driveway. One up further on the house and then the other one behind it, which would negate the need for the parking on the front lawn and the other side of the house. So I, you know, I don't, I don't see why they can't park them, again, nose to nose like we've asked other residents to do, rather than take up the front yard. Go on and put a car there.
If you mean using the space between the two, pardon, between the two houses going into, because it's very narrow, like you put anything more than a tiny smart car there, you can barely get your doors open anymore. And again, concerned about the, I don't like the idea of actually banging that box on the right side where the neighbor's house is. I don't recall what kind of cars the previous owners had, I'll be honest.
They were, they were full-size vehicles. Um, again, I, I, I firmly believe that there's room for two cars, you know, end to end that driveway without a lot of issues.
Okay. Phils?
So the driveway that runs between the two houses, does that actually go all the way back to the garages now?
If you mean, is it paved all the way back? No, no, it, it paved up to about like six or eight feet beyond where the houses begin, but it stops, there's, there's grass the rest of the way to the backyard. It's not paved all the way to the back, no.
Okay, okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
Yeah, no questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see one. Anyone on, from Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see one, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
That brings us to item number 11. Eastdale Residential, 325 Founder's Way. Why don't you state your names?
Jeff Kane.
Mr. Kane, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are you sharing anything?
Can you share my screen? Is that tough?
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so, uh, good evening and, and thank you. I just wanted to just give a little bit of history here and some context for the, for the sign that we're asking. Um, and this is a directional sign, um, not a, just for clarity, not a, not a, not a monument sign. It's a variance to allow a 13.5 square foot sign where a three-foot directional sign is what's, is what's allowed. Um, as you, as you may know, I know Eastdale Village is still, uh, still new to some people, but it is mixed-use commercial and residential community. And this graphic, I think, goes a long ways towards describing, um, the, uh, the nature of it. This blue area here, this is the residential area in blue. Green, those are commercial businesses that are currently open, currently operating. Um, these, uh, orange buildings, maybe they're a little kind of tanned maybe in the, as they, on the screen. Those are, uh, commercial buildings under construction. And then these two, uh, these two outliers here are buildings that, uh, not under construction, not yet under design, so those are the future kind of next phase. But tonight, we're talking about the Dutchos Ambulatory Surgical Center and, uh, and which, um, it, it doesn't, I guess it kind of fronts on 44, but the front door is really on the, on the back side. The front door faces interior to the, uh, to the site. And then again, just for, for, for more context, same thing is on the other side of the 44. Blue is residential, green, the buildings that are open, the orange ones are under construction, not yet open, and red are, are a future phase. So, um, access to the, uh, the DASC, the, again, the Dutchos Ambulatory Surgical Center, it comes from, from multiple directions. And, and part of what's happening here is, uh, we're actually going to be opening up a, a, a new point of access into, into Eastdale. But if you're heading Poughkeepsie bound on 44, um, you have a, a couple of ways to get into the site. One is at the unsignaled intersection of Concord Village Drive and, and 44, which can take you around and, and, and back into the, into the site. Um, the new intersection of what is Elizabeth Lane here, um, again, unsignaled, rights in and rights out only. You can't make a left off of 44 in there. You can't make a left out of there onto 44. It says rights in and rights out. And in response to that, the signage for the surgical center is on this short face here. Uh, and that sign has the logo and has the, the words Dutchos Ambulatory Surgical Center. And that's a kind of re- recurring theme here because the, um, that's the only thing people know this, uh, this building as. Uh, you don't come here a lot. You don't come, you're not here, you're not here pre-surgical, you don't have one of those appointments to come in. So this is, this is your exposure to the building coming, uh, coming, um, again, Poughkeepsie bound to turn right on Elizabeth Lane. Or you can also turn the signalized intersection here onto Eastdale Avenue and come along Founder's Way and into the parking area. Of course, if you're, if you're Pleasant Valley bound, uh, your best way to get in is again at the signalized intersection of Eastdale Avenue and, uh, and, and 44, uh, to make your left into the site, make your right on Founder's Way. And then the parking area is here, and let me just go to the, 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 the next screen. This is the parking area and this is again Founder's Way across the top here. This is the, uh, the, the turn into the parking area. Proposed sign is here at the intersection of Founder's Way and the, and the parking lot. Uh, you can also get into the parking lot from Elizabeth Lane. This is a full, you know, right in, right out, uh, left in, left out intersection. Uh, and then across the front of the building, this is the door you come in. This is one way and you can come out onto Elizabeth Lane, left or right, uh, depending on, on where you're going. But this is the intersection that we're, uh, that we are, uh, looking to, uh, to, to get this directional sign. Again, because people don't, uh, uh, don't come here a lot. And we want to be able to get here easily, we want to get here safely. Uh, and the, really the, the way that we've, uh, been able to work with the sign company to do this is to give a sign that's got a font big enough to give the drivers enough time to see the parking lot entrance, uh, in advance and making, making the turn. And here's the sign. I think you've seen it in the packet here. The height of the sign is three feet, the, uh, width of the sign is four and a half feet. It's not a lot bigger than the, than the, than the TV over there. But it is, uh, it is what we think is the, is the, the minimal necessary to give people the, the right advance notice, uh, to be able to turn to the parking lot. Here's a, a photo of the intersection if you're heading, uh, if you're heading on Founder's Way towards the parking lot. And, um, I think we're, we're going to be asking for a CO in this building in a, in a, in a couple of weeks, so this is an older picture. The building's actually done. But the, uh, the signage here is over this, uh, this gable, uh, projection here. That's the signage that says where the, the front door, where the front door is. It's not the major signage. Major signage is on the, on the other, on the other side of the, side of the building. Uh, so again, this is the, the one directional sign that you're going to see before you get there. So the color is the logo and the full name of the facility. Um, that's all that the patients and visitors have ever, have ever seen here. So we've, even the, the colors of the sign that we proposed are the same colors as the building. So it's going to see, this is what you're going to see, you're going to recognize it, be able to turn to the building. It's all about, you know, this isn't, this isn't drive by old geez, I'm going to go to the, uh, going to go to the ASC. No, this is, this is, I'm going to go to this building, haven't been here before. I'm a little nervous about it. Uh, probably, I'm probably not driving because you can't drive home, it's going to be driven there. Um, so still, it's to be able to make that, that, that recognition. We think these, these signage cues are important to be able to get them to safely to, to the parking lot, uh, first time. And obviously the word entrance and the arrow, they're important to tell you where, where to go, not just that you're at the building, this is where you turn to get into the, get into the lot. Again, applying the, uh, the questions, undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Uh, as you've shown, this is already a commercial and residential area. There will be no detriment to the nearby properties. And this is a, is a non-illuminated sign, um, not, again, not looking to advertise here, just looking to get people in the, uh, in the, uh, in the parking lot. Uh, can we get, uh, get there by some other method that's feasible, feasible other than an area variance? Uh, we don't think so. The, uh, again, the font size and all of each of the sign elements, they are key to identifying that you're at the right building and you're in the right direction. We have presented, um, a 10-square-foot sign. The logo and the name use, uh, they use a 10% smaller font. The arrow and the address, uh, remain the same size. So you have a slightly, uh, slightly more crowded, um, slightly less readable sign. And, you know, I'll tell you, most of the time, the 10-square-foot sign is probably okay. We're looking for the flexibility to go to the 13 and a half square foot sign, uh, to make sure that we hit all, all of our markers, uh, for the, uh, for the, for the patients. But this is the, this is the, the 10-square-foot sign. Again, it'll, um, it's, it's, it, it, it works for, for most cases, um, but we think that the larger sign does a, does a better job of meeting our, our requirements. Yes, whether it's substantial, um, certainly not substantial, 10 and a half feet, the variance is not substantial. 13 and a half square feet total sign is not substantial, given the, the signage in the, in the, in the town of Poughkeepsie. And the, the variances that, uh, that I, that I know this, uh, this board reviews on a, on a regular basis. I think this is not a, not a substantial sign, not a substantial variance. Uh, and again, will it have an adverse effect or impact on the, uh, on the conditions of the neighborhood or district? It will not. This is what the, this is what Eastdale Village is owned for. There is no monument sign for this, uh, for this, uh, for this, for this building. The only monument signs that we have are the ones that just say Eastdale Village. And so this is the, again, not, uh, not, not branding in terms of, uh, kind of E here. Again, this is to get you in the, in the parking lot. And was it self-created? We can argue whether it was, was it, was or wasn't, but, uh, either way, I think that, um, it's not, uh, not necessary related to the, to the variance. So those are, uh, those are our comments with the chairman and, and board and happy to, uh, to take any questions that, uh, that you may have.
So you intend to only put the, this sign on the west entrance?
That's, that's west. Uh, 44 there runs, uh, believe it or not, north-south. But yes, it's on the, it's on the, it's on the west or on the back side of 44. It's across here on the bottom. It's on the west, uh, west side here.
But people would come in from the other, from Elizabeth?
People come from Elizabeth Lane, uh, can enter right here.
Okay, and you don't think they'll be confused because they'll see the sign on the building?
I don't, because there's a big sign on the, uh, not a big sign, there's a sign on the building here.
Okay. And it's a pretty big building, right?
It's a big building.
Is that the only commercial building on?
On Founder's Way, it is, um, so interesting question. So, um, um, you know, this building here, you know, Founder's Way runs this, uh, this whole length. So the side of this is the Asian Restaurant, which is not quite open yet. They're, uh, awaiting their liquor license. So they will, you know, they have a, they have a patio in front of it and parking lot entrance on the Founder's Way. Um, there will be another building next to the Ambulatory Surgical Center here, which will again have, uh, be essentially off of Founder's Way. We'll have another building here, which will again be between Founder's Way and, and Route 44, so there will be other, um, there are, there will be other.
Right, but there's no really way to, to miss the building.
Sorry, say again?
There's no way to, to miss the building. I mean, if you, if you miss the first right to go into the parking lot, you're going to, you're going to drive down and then you're going to get to Elizabeth, right? You can make a, make a right and come in that way? Okay. Do you have a illustration of what the signage on the front of the building looks like?
I I don't have it with me, but it, uh, it has the, uh, it has the logo and it says Dutchos, Dutchos Ambulatory Surgical Center.
Is it bigger than, than the, this sign?
It is bigger than this sign. Uh, this is only 10 and a half feet. I have it. I can probably dig it out. You want to bear with me for a second?
Sure.
Let me probably find it.
While he's doing that, can I ask a quick question?
Okay.
Jeff, while you, while you're doing that, do you, the, is there an actual speed limit on Founder's Way or is there, is there a design speed or a, uh, cars don't move too fast on, on, on those streets, right?
Yeah, I, I.
I don't think there's a speed limit sign. I don't recall.
Yeah, I think we're 25 is the, uh, is the internal speed limit there. This is the, um, this is the sign on the, uh, on the, the, the north side of the building that you would see Poughkeepsie bound from, from 44. Again, the logo and the name, the, uh, the name of the center, uh, and then the that's the, uh, that's the, the, in the logo and the name over the entrance.
Okay, and so the entrance is at the far end of the parking lot?
It's at the far end, yes, yes.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. Christine?
So when you, when you pull in, when you know that you're going to Founder's Way, the parking lot is, is right there in front of the building?
Yes.
Okay, and in our packet here, is this, is this the 13 square foot or the 10?
Uh, that's, that's, in the original packet, it's a 13 and a half. Um, I, I know I submitted 10s, were those distributed as well?
Yeah, they were. The, the, the one that's, um, 10 square feet is labeled.
Any county thought this was a matter of local concern?
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Got it?
Thank you.
Art?
Just out of curiosity, do you really need that logo in there? If it says the name of the business?
The, um, this is all about recognition of where you are and everything they've, they've gotten has the logo and it has the name. One or the other are going to catch your eye that it's the right place. So we think that they're both important to recognizing the, where you are.
And you really think it needs to be five feet tall to catch your eye in that parking lot and that, and that back road that you're limited to be limit?
So I guess the question is, could we, could we shorten the overall?
Bring the base down? Bring the base down?
Yeah, the base could be shorter. Yeah, I don't see, I don't see, that doesn't detract from what we're trying to do here.
I'd like to see it lower, if I may be the only one, so that may be an issue. And you really don't think you could live with the 10-square feet?
Again, it's a...
It is a slow, it's a...
It's slow. I think most of the time, I think most of the time, the 10-square feet is fine. And, you know, if that's the way this board feels, yes, well, people will, some people will, you know, some people don't need the sign at all, some people need it bigger, so we're trying to hit more, but, you know, we can probably live with the 10-square feet.
Jeff, can you stop sharing, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
They're in by two concerns.
Do you have an illustration of one that comports with the code?
In the packet, it outlined really just the three-square feet, it's really just the entrance and the arrow. So there's a figure in there, which just has a little box on it. I don't see one.
Page six of Appendix B.
What?
Page six of Appendix B. Yeah, so see how he boxes it out there? So that's basically the alarm...
Word entrance and accompanying arrow, or approximately three-square feet, oh, okay. But you don't have an illustration of the entire sign, it's just three-square feet?
Right, yeah.
Oh, is this? This is it?
No, yeah, just the entrance, just this arrow.
Oh, they don't have all of that?
No, it's just that. Right, here a foot, right three feet.
What other properties are undeveloped in there, which may require directional signs?
The only one which could require a directional sign would be that last lot at the, if I This lot here is the only other, that's proposed as a daycare building. There's no leases, there's no finality on that being a daycare building, but that's where that's leaning. It may or may not require the daycare sign. It's a little, or a directional sign, it's a little different use, because people are there every day, the same people. So that's a little different of a situation than what we have here with...
You'd have to come up with different arguments.
What's that?
You'd have to come up with different arguments.
You know, I, yeah, right, if we needed one, it'd be a different argument. But this is, you know, this surgical center is its own little animal, in terms of its needs.
Jeff, what about building O2? Isn't that also undeveloped?
It is undeveloped. The question was more about, you know, the need for directional signage. Again, they don't, these buildings don't have the same, you know, there's, we don't have directional signage within the center. It's not what we've found is necessary. This building, this use, is just different.
Across the street, you have an idea about whether directional signs will be necessary in any of the proposed commercial buildings?
I think these buildings will operate the same way the buildings do on East Hill Avenue North. So the East Hill Avenue South there, they're gonna operate the same way. The one, you know, does building P over in the corner need something that gets somebody over there? Again, I don't think so, it's right next to an entrance right here. Building H, I don't think so. It's just another commercial mixed-use building. So this is the one, this is the one building that's special.
Phyllis, do you have any questions?
No, it's fine, thank you.
Tony?
So there'll be recognition of the building on Elizabeth?
Yes.
And there'll be on the backside on Founder's as well, right? Over to the entrance? That was the picture you had up a minute ago?
Yeah, that's, right, it wasn't a very big signage. Right, that's not particularly, the logo is visible, but the language isn't, the whole name of the building isn't particularly legible from Founder's Way. It's a long ways.
So from the entrance in that picture there, that's the front of the building, or that's the front, right?
It's the, yeah, it's the usage front, yes. And what I'm thinking about this building is there are these two sets of doors here, and this is the entrance to the right, just off the edge of the screen here, is where the pickup is, because again, you can't drive home, you have to be picked up. So that's, they wanna make sure that people know, they don't walk to these, this other set of doors there, they gotta walk to the entrance, because you can't get in the other way. You're actually in a post-operative care unit at that point. This is the, this is how you get into the waiting area.
So from where you're gonna pull in the parking lot, right there in that picture, you're gonna have a visible sign in the background?
Yes, once you're in the parking lot, yes, this is to get you to the front door, in the right place.
So the gray on the left of this picture here, that's Founder's, right?
To the left of this picture is Elizabeth Lane.
No, that's Founder's Way. Looking down towards the townhomes.
Right, so that picture was looking right here at the front door. So this is Elizabeth Lane.
Right, but he's actually, he's describing Founder's Way.
Oh, okay, all right. So yes.
So the, my question is, so where your arrow, your highlight is right there, that's where it would be? So it is visible eyesight from the entrance that the sign's being proposed?
I think once you turn in here, you're gonna see these two gabled features of the building. And then as you get in here, you're gonna see the word entrance over this one. And so you'll know to park in this general area. Is that the question?
It answered the question.
Yeah, right, right. Okay.
Phyllis, answer?
Yeah, how, if I could ask, how large is the sign over the entrance?
Yeah, I was, that was not on what I, so, this is four-by-four, four-foot by four-foot is the logo, and then the letters, they're six inches high, spelled out across the front. I don't, there wasn't a square footage total on this drawing.
Do you by chance have a square footage total on the sign that will be on Elizabeth Lane, on the building?
Yeah, I did, that was the other piece that was missing. So again, the same-sized logo, I think those are also six-inch letters, they're just stacked instead of, well, maybe a little bigger, but I don't know. Nine inches high, there it is, right there, so.
And that signage is allowed to you by whatever the code is in East Hill, correct?
Both the other, both the Elizabeth Lane side and the Founder's Way side are both per code, no variances required.
It appears so, I just still need an application for that.
Still need an application, sorry, by my calculations, we're good. We'll obviously defer to staff there.
So does that mean you'll have to come back for those signs as well?
No, we're compliant.
They're compliant.
Oh, okay, sorry, thank you.
When you, what address do they use when you tell them where to go? Is it just 25 Founder's Way or 325 Founder's Way?
325 is on the, yes.
Anyone else?
I did want to point out that the requirement on directional signs is town-wide, right? The size of directional signs, so it's not unique to this zoning district.
Correct.
So the precedent here, I don't think, would be limited to McDonald Heights Center District. I think it would be potentially for any directional sign in the town. It's worth considering.
The other thing the board should know is that directional signs are exempt signs, which is why they're limited in size to the three-square feet. They're not regulated under the regular, you know, monument signs and so on. Directional signs are strictly supposed to be directional, and that's, but they are exempt under the code section, which is a separate section from permitted signs. They're technically, I don't wanna say they're not regulated, but they're exempted from the sign regulations.
Right, so the, yes, right on both counts, and the unique nature of this site is as an ambulatory surgical center. That's the, yes, directional signs are directional signs, but there is a unique nature here, which we haven't had to deal with within, not only McDonald Heights, but we think it's unique to, other than other ambulatory surgical centers in the town, there really is that unique nature related to this building, which I think goes to some of the precedent that this may or may not set. And yes, there's exemption, but obviously not unregulated, we wouldn't be here, right?
Did want to ask you, to the height, is that a problem for the cars parking behind it? In the image that you showed, it looks like it pretty much blocks the view for, you know, somebody pulling out of the parking lot.
Right, I will, the sign guy, did the rendering? I don't know, that's not... If you can give me a plus or minus, a couple of feet on that island for where the sign goes, we'll need to make sure that it doesn't block.
If it were lower, could it be so low that it would be like beneath the window height of an average car? I mean, is there really any benefit to it being that tall at that location?
So 42 inches is, I think, the, when you're doing line of sight from a car, I think that's, I think that's the measurement that you use. I don't think we're gonna get under 42, but I think we need to move it back, in this photo, move it back from the intersection a little bit, so we're not obstructing your view, that you look coming out, looking to the...
Is there anything, like, as you're approaching it, is there anything in front of it that would prevent you from seeing it if it were lower?
In front of it, I'm sorry?
So if you're driving down Founder's Way from East Hill Avenue North, right, you make the right, and you're driving down, is there anything that would prevent you from seeing the sign if it were lower to the ground?
I think as Mr. Grace asked, can we go lower? And yes, it doesn't need to be 60 inches high.
Mike, your question, and Mike, you're right, that if we granted this, that we are opening up for all the other possible entities that come to the town?
Not as widely as that sounds. I mean, Jeff's point is well-taken, that it's an, you know, it is a unique use, and so there's not, right, so, but yes, it would apply in a similar, if there were a similar situation elsewhere, it's not limited to this district.
Okay, but you couldn't have Joe's hamburger, want the sign that big, that would...
You would have, I think, sufficient legal reason to say no in that instance, where, you know, right, so I, you know...
Okay, thank you.
And if it's lower, then it would, the square footage, the overall square footage would be obviously less.
The 13-and-a-half and 10-square-foot calculations are the gray part of the sign. They don't include the blue base.
Okay, thank you.
But they could both be made shorter to comply to the line of sight that Mike asked about, right?
Yes, the blue column could certainly be less.
The sign might be able to squash down a little bit.
It's, again, the elements that we're trying to preserve there are the logo and the full name, the entrance and the arrow. So each of those four elements, it's hard to get that in much smaller than the 10-square foot often, and still provide the recognition to the driver.
All right, anyone, anyone else?
Is there a sidewalk along there, along Founder's Way? There is, you can see it behind the white car, there's a sidewalk that runs parallel to Founder's Way. I can pop my...
Got it.
Right, so that sidewalk, we have sidewalk actually on both sides of Founder's Way that runs the whole extent, so.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, just observation here, on your 13-and-a-half-square-foot sign, 68 inches total height, you'd be looking at something 32 inches off the ground to the base of the sign. And on the other one, the 10-square feet, would be 60, rather than 68, and subtract 31, it would be 29, so it's either 29 inches or 32 inches off the ground. So I guess my question is, if you get one of these two sizes of signs, can you get closer to the ground with the blue section?
Yeah, I think we'd still wanna be probably a foot above the sign, and allow the 325 to be visible, so that's, but yes, but the blue column can certainly be shorter than what's shown here.
So that maybe could be like 12 inches, for example?
Right, it's probably, it's, I'm gonna, I need to talk to the sign guy, but I think we're probably somewhere in the 12, 15 inches probably off the ground to allow that 325 to still be, you know, you wanna be above, a little bit of, let's move that around a bit there, and be visible above the snow and all those other issues.
When do you expect it to open?
So we are requesting TCO on the honor about the 18th of this month, and there's some lag with health department approvals. They have to do a review here after that step. I'm not sure exactly when the first surgery is scheduled here, but that's the, will be as soon as we can get the state to finalize their review.
When do you think the building's signage will be done?
In time for opening. I mean, that's the, my conversations with the... In time for opening, I mean, that's the uh, in my conversations with the with the sign guy this morning, um how Paul was, hey, we'd like to move ahead on on this, so we didn't know what the so we got a couple of weeks to get it done.
Okay, so I I'd like to see a rendering of of just what's permissible, just the entrance sign, and then your descriptions of of lowering it to whatever you can do and still satisfy, you know, you want the number and you want everything that you want, and and take a look at us. Can they get a can they get a temporary sign permit to take to cover them if they open up before our next meeting?
You want a temporary directional sign?
Yeah.
Sure.
That would that help you at all?
I'm not sure what that what that what that then consists of, what is the
So it would be like, you know, you'd have like a vinyl or some sort of thing that has just what you proposed, but it would be temporary while we're still deciding. Then is that something that could work? All right, I don't want to, I don't want to hold you up from from opening up, but I also I don't want to make a premature decision one way or the other. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, can we also see an updated photo of what the actual building looks like currently with its
Well, I think by the next um meeting, you'll have you'll have the building signage on. Is that what you said?
Yes, I will uh will update this photo with a with a new photo of the of the building. Yeah, the background photo, sure.
But the building signage should be
It 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 should be on time.
Okay. All right, so then, just so we're clear, I think we'd like to see the renderings of just what's permissible, and then whatever new stuff you can come up, which which is lower to the ground. Either the ten foot or the thirteen and a half. And whatever you're, you know, in conversation with your sign person about what they can accommodate.
Okay.
All right? Anything else? All right, and I'm sorry, was there anybody from the audience who wishes to comment on this? And anyone from Zoom who wishes to comment? Then I'll move to adjourn this to the October sixteenth.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then I I move to take a a ten minute break.
What about number twelve?
Five minute break.
About number twelve.
What about number twelve? What, that's other business.
That's other business, that comes at the end.
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. Okay, we're back in session. This is deliberation process, so I'm gonna bring us to item number four, one drum court. Uh this is a type two action. It's an application to a legalizing a distant deck located ten feet off the property line, so it's been there forty-some years.
Forever.
Yeah, so I think that um it's not so much a problem. Anybody have any concerns about this one?
I don't.
No.
No.
And let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by that granting of the variance, uh this is particular deck which is enclosed and encroaches no more than the primary house, has been there for forty-some years and will have no impact on the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, this is the only way based upon the location of the deck. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, perhaps mathematically, but again, as it encroaches no further than the primary residence, um it's de minimis. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there's no evidence that there's any environmental or physical impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny this application, and I offer those findings. All right, Christine, do you mind making a motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair, so move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. The next is uh number five, one Homer Place. Now this is a fence on a corner lot. He's looking for a um a six foot fence which requires a two and a half foot variance. Does anybody have any concerns about this one?
The rail's pretty far off the road anyway. He's gonna be behind that, I think he should be fine.
Okay, then then let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, there are similarly situated properties um that have a fence, this is a corner lot, so he has two front yards. So um there should be no change in the in the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, since this is a corner lot, uh he can't get the privacy necess- he requires from a three and a half foot fence, so this, an area variance is required. And whether it's substantial, um perhaps mathematically, but um in in light of the situation of a corner lot, it it has little impact. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that it'll have any environmental or physical impact, and while this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those. Art, do you mind making a motion?
Paul, are you requiring a survey?
I'm not requiring a survey, but I think he said he was gonna do it, and I think it's it's in his best interest to do it.
Okay.
Okay, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results. Sorry, this is by board members. Approving this variance, the board is approving this report by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number six, eleven Lyford Street. This is a an area variance request to replace an existing deck. Requiring an eight foot variance for the side lot line. I would point out that the existing deck is inbound of the primary residence, and this is not gonna get any closer to the side lot anyway, so let me offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance, uh this is consistent with other properties in the neighborhood, and in fact, um this deck has existed for quite some time, it's approaching no further on the side lot line than the existing deck. Um it just goes a little bit farther into the deep uh rear lot. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance based upon the location of the house and the side lot line, it requires an area variance to um for the applicant to attain his desires. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, um perhaps mathematically, but since it's has less of an impact than the primary residence does, it's de minimis. And whether the proposed vary- uh var- variance will have an adverse effect on the impact, have it, have us effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition, there's no evidence that there'll be any environmental or physical impact. And while um this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those. Okay, Phyllis, do you mind making this motion?
Sure, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearings, and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Uh that brings us to item number seven, fifty-five King George Road, this is a special use permit for an accessory apartment. Does anybody have any concerns about this one? There is a staff report on this. Um and this is an unlisted action, so I move that the ZBA determine that there are no ad- no involved no other involved agencies and declare itself to be the lead agency for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And further, I move that the ZBA determine that the action would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and issue a negative declaration.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Do you mind doing this? And this is a special use permit.
I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during public hearings, results of site visits by board members, and that it meets the criteria set forth by the town.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number nine, nineteen Cardinal Drive. This is a an application to approve an existing shed located right on the per- rear property line, requiring a ten foot variance.
Did we miss one?
Which one?
Number eight.
Four nineteen, that's right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, number number eight, this four nineteen Vassar Road, this is a this is a shed, this is an application to approve a shed located right on the rear property line, requiring a ten foot variance. Uh anybody have any concerns about this one?
No.
Then let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. Uh this shed has existed there for um for many, many years, um and is consistent with other properties in the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance based upon, excuse me, the size of the lot and where his septic system is, uh he would require an area variance to attain his desired results. And whether the requested area variance is substantial. Um it is mathematically substantial, however It is mathematically substantial, however, it's been there for quite some time, and there's no real other place to put it, and so I think it has less of an impact. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that it has any environmental or physical impact. And while this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and so I would offer those findings. Tony, yes, do you mind making a motion?
Okay, sure. Okay, this is item number eight. Okay, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. Decision is based on our duty application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and in approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Brings us to item number nine, 19 Cardinal Drive. This is an application to legalize an existing deck located 11.8 feet from the side property line, requiring a variance of 8.2 feet. Does anybody have any concerns about this one? Then let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detrimental to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. The deck has existed for a long period of time, and has, it's consistent with the neighborhood and has no impact. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible other than area variance, based upon the location of the house and proximity to the side lot line, an area variance would be required. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, but because this is actually less of an impact than the primary residence, I think it's, the impact is de minimis. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence that there's any environmental or physical impact. And while this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I offer those findings. Christine, do you mind making this motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number nine. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
All those, well, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number 10, 46 Kelsey Road. This is an application for a second driveway that does not extend beyond the front yard line, and creates a combined driveway width of 18.5 feet, requiring a variance. Any discussion on this one?
My concern is, what I stated before, there's a usable driveway on the right side of the house. There's a garage behind the house that was used by all the previous residents of that property. And you're all familiar with our neighborhood with the proliferation of front yard parking due to a lot of the rental properties. It's just, it's just making the area look like a, almost like a used car parking lot around the zone, the town, the fourth ward.
Christine?
No, I, I mean, it is narrow, but, you know, and what Art was saying, it's not, I mean, what, in the past, we frequently don't allow that.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever authorized one, approved one, and I think my recollection is that we've made people tear up a second driveway. Either Phyllis or Tony's have any input?
I know the cars were bigger in the past. There is no path there to the garage any longer, and I don't know. I saw in the picture what the Verizon box did in terms of extended past the house. I don't know what to do with that.
Well, I think Verizon, I think Verizon would move that box if they were asked to.
Yeah, I think they would have to.
The box is not on the applicant's property, it's on the neighbor's property.
Yeah, but I still think, you know, that done properly, I think Verizon would, if they were requested by the two parties, that they would probably come in and move that box with no big issue. That's my, you know.
Tony, Jean, any?
No further.
No? Tony, yes?
No.
Well, let's do, how many people are in favor of granting this? One? No? Tony, yes?
No.
All right, then, do I have to do findings if we're gonna vote to deny the application?
You need to state the reasons for the denial. It doesn't have to necessarily be the balancing test.
Okay, so, all right, so here's what I would say. I think that it's inconsistent with the other, with the neighborhood, and we've never authorized. The zoning code frowns upon second driveways and front, parking in the front. And so I think those are reasons to deny the application. So let me make.
Actually, I take it back. I think we should work through the elements.
Okay. All right. Whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detrimental to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. I think that adding a wider, granting a variance for a wider driveway and an additional driveway is inconsistent with the neighborhood and is frowned upon in our zoning code. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, there's a garage in the backyard, quite clear that's been utilized in the past, and I think that that's a way to avoid the area variance. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, a second driveway is substantial. And whether it will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence of that, and while this is self-created, that's not a reason to deny it. But I would offer those findings. And then let me make this motion. I move to deny the request for an area variance in item number 10. This decision is based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits, and the findings that I made. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed of the denial? And one, okay. Then that motion to deny is carried. All right, so that's. All right, so that brings us to item number one on our agenda regarding sign number two. This is for a monument sign, supposed to be on Lot 1. That's the Arterial and Raymond Avenue intersection, with a height of 10 feet, 1 inch, including the base and the side, well, I guess. So it requires a variance of 17 square feet in the sign area and a variance of 4 feet for the right-of-way setback. So was there a staff report on?
There was, yeah.
On this part, and did that, did it come to a conclusion? Well, this is an unlisted action anyway, so.
You want to see more?
I mean, this was written before they had put the, you know, changing the material, so it's, I think it would still be supportive of granting that variance if we got rid of the tenant panels on it, and it would reduce, so I think that would still be supportive.
All right, then this is an unlisted action, so I move that the ZBA determine that there are no other involved agencies and declare itself to be the lead agency for this action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
And I move that the ZBA determine that the action would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and issue a negative declaration. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And then, Art, do you mind making a motion regarding just sign number two and item number one?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. Approving this variance, the board adopts this finding, those.
Staff report.
Staff report. This is put by the staff report, and this is for sign number one, correct?
Sign number two.
Sign number two.
Sign number two on Lot 1.
On Lot 1?
Yes. Lot 1 is the intersection.
This is for sign number two on Lot 1. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to other business. There's a request for a rehearing at 44 Treetop Lane. You may recall that this was an application for a fence which had extended past the property line. The applicant was denied and has requested a rehearing. The law requires that if we wanna entertain a rehearing, it has to be a unanimous vote of the board.
Paul, technically, it wasn't a denial. You approved.
Oh, that's right.
The variance to the property line conditioned upon removing the portion that goes beyond the property line.
Yeah, so we made a determination, and the applicant wishes to do a rehearing. So that requires a unanimous vote of the board to rehear whatever we did at that time. So sometimes.
Yeah, I understand what you wanna do, but, I mean, it's on the town property, so why would we wanna allow that?
So I will tell you that I'm not interested in rehearing this.
No, I.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to, I guess, deny a rehearing of 44 Treetop Lane.
How to second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of denying a rehearing, vote aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And then there's a lead agency request from the planning board for Salt Point Center, 53 Salt Point Turnpike. Do you wanna describe what that's about?
Sure, it's a project that would involve three mixed-use buildings, total of 89 residential units as proposed, and about 20,000 square feet of commercial use with parking kind of in the center of the project.
This is the old farm on the corner?
Yes, yeah. It would also include some transportation improvements as proposed. Right now, it would be a roundabout replacing the current intersection. It's a lot of work to be done on the site plan, but I don't think we've identified any variances yet, but there may be. I don't recall. Yeah, still kind of a work in progress, but this is just a lead agency at this point.
All right, then I move that we accept the request from the planning board for them to be lead agency on the Salt Point Center, 53 Salt Point Turnpike project.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Okay? Did we leave anybody out?
They're all good.
Okay, then I move to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. See you next month.
Good night, everyone.